All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. And I'm going to call to order our March 11th, 2025 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Vice Chair Barboa is going to be participating remotely via Zoom. All other commissioners are present. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Frank Baca. Thank you, Commissioner Baca. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Thank you, Madam County Manager. Commissioners, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Not seeing any. Do I make a motion to approve the agenda? And Madam Clerk, if we could please get a roll call vote.
Commissioner Frank Baca. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca. Vice Chair Barboa. Chair Olivas. So called.
Thank you. That will take us on to public comment. Each person has two minutes, and you'll be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium. If you're speaking in person, before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Seanti, can you please announce the names?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. We have two speakers so far. I will start with Don Schrader, followed by Dr. Geraldo Cianalo.
Don Schrader, Trump had no hugs, no contact with his mother for years as a young boy. Trump was put down as a kid for being fat. Trump's father sent him to a military school. Trump's father taught him to worship money and power and to do anything he could get away with to grab more money and power, no matter how many people he made suffer. The dangerous bully lawyer Roy Cohen taught young man Trump for years to always attack, deny everything, never admit defeat. None of us can say for sure that if we had gone through all that Trump did, we would not commit his vicious evils. How long until millions of Trump voters realize he conned them with his hate-filled, white racist lies? How long until millions of Trump voters regret voting for this love-starved, power-drunk, liar-in-chief and his gang of billionaires? If Trump cuts Medicaid and food stamps, if Trump's tariffs cause food prices and inflation to go up, if the climate crisis worsens with many more severe storms and wildfires, will Trump's voters wake up?
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Dr. Geraldo Cianalo.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, and staff. Thank you for serving. I'm an alternative health doctor and minister. Tonight's speech is Part One. Dr. Michael Yen, a former vice president and chief scientific advisor for Pfizer and founder and CEO of the biotech company Ziarko, now owned by Novartis, one of the most prominent critics of COVID mandates and COVID-19 shots or bioweapon agents. He believed that the narratives around COVID-19 are false and were put into place deliberately to exert control over society. We're living in interesting prophetic times. Bible prophecy is not to scare us, but to prepare us, which makes it an exciting time for those who believe in Messiah Yeshua, who gave us the Holy Scriptures. Whether you believe in the Bible or not, it has its acronym Basic Instruction before leaving Earth. Revelation 18:23, "The merchants of the great ones will deceive many nations through their sorcery." Do you know what that means? Merchants of the great ones are the big corporation, Big Tech, Big Pharma, Bill Gates, mainstream media, World Health Organization, et cetera, and will deceive means PSYOP or psychological operation or cognitive warfare. From a biblical worldview, they're just deception, and sorcery means pharmakia or Minister of Drugs. I share this because we all need to be aware of what's coming ahead to protect you, our families, our citizens, and taxpayers' health and well-being. According to Dr. Yen, for those who took the COVID shot, there's three weeks to four years' life expectancy, depending on how compromised our immune system. After four years, expect turbo cancer, but there's hope, help and healing, if you choose to, from a creator who made us. So if you took the first vaccine, we have lost 50% of our immune system to fight against these free radicals. If you took the second shot, we lost 75%. If you took the third shot, we just left to 25% to fight these free radicals of unknown deadly poisonous chemicals and bacteria and virus. So how do you reverse this scientifically and supernaturally? That'll be the next time in Part Two. Thank you. May God have mercy on us.
Thank you, sir.
Let's conclude public comment.
Thank you so much. We'll go ahead, and I have a couple of statements to read into the record regarding the closed meeting earlier today. I offer the following statement regarding the closed meeting held Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 3:00 p.m. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on March 11, 2025, were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it'll become part of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second? Second from Commissioner Frank Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Frank Baca. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca. Vice Chair Barboa. Vice Chair, thank you. And Chair Olivas. Thank you.
Passes 5-0. And then on the next statement, I move that the county attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed for Item 2 and 3, and that the contract attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in Item 4 in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, March 11, 2025, within the parameters set by this commission in the closed meeting agenda. So moved. Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Frank Baca. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca. Vice Chair Barboa. Chair Olivas. Thank you.
Passes 5-0. That takes us on to Item 5, Approval of Our Minutes, our February 25th, 2025 Administrative Meeting Minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes. Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Frank Baca. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca. Vice Chair Barboa. Chair Olivas. Thank you.
Passes 5-0. All right. And Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for, or a resolution number for Item 6E?
Mr. Chair, Item 6E is AR 2025-26.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore I move to approve the consent agenda. A second from Commissioner Baca. Seeing no discussion on the consent agenda, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Frank Baca. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca. Vice Chair Barboa. Vice Chair Barboa, yes? Thank you. Chair Olivas. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a 5-0 vote. Takes us on to our adoptions of ordinances and amendments to the county code. Item A, we have 3D economic development will be presenting on 3D Glass Solutions IRB. Madam Clerk, could you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 7A is Ordnance 2025-12.
Thank you. And we'll now convene a public hearing, and do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No speakers so far.
Okay, thank you very much. And before I turn it over to Ms. Tobias, just pointing out this item is sponsored by Commissioner Walt Benson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. The Economic Development Staff requests approval for the ordinance in connection with a proposed project located in Burnaleo County, New Mexico, to construct, acquire, and install equipment and other personal property for the 3D Glass Solutions Inc. expansion. The bonds would provide certain tax exemptions to defray part of the cost of the equipment. I'd like to give an overview. First and foremost, this project is located in District 4 at 5601 Balloon Fiesta Parkway Northeast. The company 3D Glass Solutions launched in 2006 and has been using its proprietary glass ceramic dubbed Apex Glass to do custom design and the production of semiconductor chips for telecommunications primarily. The company had a $25 million IRB in 2018 and a $2 million state lead-up. They have met the requirements and fully used and closed these items since 2018. And as a result, the company moved from a 5,000-square-foot facility to a 37,000-square-foot facility. Their headcount increased greater than 250% from 18 employees to 66 employees and expected to add 45 in the next five years and up to 54 in 10 years with this new IRB. The annual payroll increased greater than 300% from $1.5 million in 2018 to $6.1 million in 2023, and today, the average salary for employees exceeds $91,000. In 2025, the company is planning to transition primarily from their R&amp;D-related contracts to high-volume product manufacturing on several government and commercial-related projects, and this is what this IRB will be applied for. The company is requesting, such as to have what is being approved by the county today, is this IRB ordinance or the final adoption? The IRB par amount that the company is requesting is $30 million to support new CapEx purchases for high-volume manufacturing and their fab expansion. It is equipment-only, where the applicant will be exempt from gross receipts tax and personal property tax on the equipment. The applicant does currently lease a building that is under an existing IRB, and so real property is exempt from that property, but they are the tenant. The term for this IRB is 10 years. And the payment in lieu of taxes is 25% of the mill rate, which amounts to approximately $46,732 annually over that 10-year period. The expansion will begin immediately based on the receipt of the new equipment. Although this is specialized, there is lag time in the ordering, but they are busting at the seams and ready to embark on this manufacturing endeavor. In addition to retaining the 66 jobs, as I mentioned, they will be adding 45 new jobs in five years, and over the term of the IRB, bringing that to 54 jobs, for a total of 120 jobs. As you can see in the deck, the average salaries will start at the minimum in each of those categories. In your summary packet, there is a breakout of when and how many individuals in each of those areas, but the aggregate is the average of $91,000 a year. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Tobias. Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to applaud 3D Glass. They met all the requirements for their prior IRB and then exceeded those. I think this is the ideal type of industrial revenue bond that we're looking for, a company that creates jobs, honors their commitments, and creates economic opportunity, not just for individual employees, but also new revenue coming into the state from outside of New Mexico. And this will allow them to do even more so because of the manufacturing that they want to take on. Also, the manufacturing creates surrounding jobs, which isn't being discussed here, but there will be reverberations of positive effects from this. And it's only 10 years, so I urge my colleagues' support for this. Thank you, Ms. Tobias, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Tobias, thank you. I just wanted to talk about the presentation. I think that this is the first time I've seen a PowerPoint like this, really to the point. I love that you have a map of the location, I mean, for people watching from home or people. It's just very well done, and thank you, Commissioner Benson, for bringing this forward. I intend to support it. Thanks.
Other commissioners? I just want to jump on what both of those before me said. This is a great model project. It sounds like, I guess I have one question, is this a homegrown company? Or it sounds like they started here and grew here?
Yes, Commissioner Olivas, that's exactly what's exciting about this particular project, is that the technology was created here, and while they have diverse investors from out of state, their partnership with the county has enabled them to grow here and stay here.
Fantastic. Well, I think they've had a lot of success. It looks like they're planning for even more. And the one thing I would just say is I hope that the national economic environment supports them, because it looks like we're looking at some very bad decisions with tariffs and reciprocal tariffs and the cost of the goods that these folks use, that I'm sure probably are sourced from around the globe. And if they're selling to governments and telecommunications, they're probably used around the globe, and so I really hope that the poor policy decisions in Washington don't affect 3D Glass. But with that, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Frank Baca. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca. Vice Chair Barboa. Chair Olivas.
Passes on a 5 to 0 vote, and I think that you'll be presenting the next item as well, which is a Notice of Intent for Inducement Revenue Bond for Corazon Energy Storage. And Madam Clerk, if we could get a resolution number for, I guess there's a couple of items in this section?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 8A is AR 2025-27, and 8B is FR 2025-28.
Thank you very much. And this item is sponsored by Commissioner Frank Baca. Ms. Tobias, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. The Economic Development Staff requests approval for the administrative resolution in connection with a proposed project, Corazon Energy Storage LLC, located within Burnaleo County, New Mexico, for the purpose of inducing the development of a standalone battery energy storage system. The development will be completed with $190 million of capital investment to store and provide 150 megawatt grid capacity. The bonds will provide certain tax exemptions to defray the part of the cost of the project, and the county is not making a loan or lending its credit to the company. I'd like to do an overview for you. So the project location will be in the Parahito Mesa, abutting the existing PNM substation there. Plus, Power is the parent company for Corazon Energy Storage, and they specialize in battery energy storage systems, much like the Sun Lasso Battery Energy Storage System that we recently brought to commission. Corazon and Sun Lasso are two of the four projects that were selected by PNM in their 2026-2027 RFP process. Some of the benefits, just as a review of a battery energy storage system, is that it provides grid stability and reliability for PNM's grid and is part of their 2040 sustainability goals for emissions reduction, renewable energy integration, peak savings, and so forth. The economic benefits that are generated from that is the cost savings that are passed on to the consumer when PNM are able to draw from this energy that was already generated and was in excess, being stored, and then released back onto the grid when it's needed. The company has conducted extensive public engagement through their special-use permit process with the county, which was granted, and they received no negative comments or pushback from the surrounding landowners that have all been very supportive. The reporting requirements that we listed here, in addition to the county's IRB monitoring, a project such as this does have a project such as this does have monitoring and reporting requirements with P and M as well. Today, what's being approved by the county is the introduction or the inducement resolution for this IRB project. The IRB par amount of 225 million. Again, this is equipment only. The applicant will not be exempt from real property tax. They will continue to pay taxes on all three parcels of this project. However, they're applying for exemption for gross receipts tax and personal property tax on the equipment. The term of the IRB is 20 years with a payment in lieu of taxes of 10% of the mill rate, which on average is $84,210 to Burnaleo County specifically. According to the Renewable Energy State Statute, they also pay a pilot to the schools. That's, it's a separate process and will go directly to the schools. So what's represented here is the par amount, excuse me, the payment in lieu of taxes amount just for the county. The construction is planning to start in Q3 of 2026. There is a long lead time to order this type of equipment, which is why the timing of the IRB is now. But, but the construction is fairly quick and operations to begin Q4 of 2027. The job creation for this project is 40 to 70 local construction jobs. And again, by state statute, they will all be prevailing wage jobs and a one full-time contract maintenance position for the operation and ongoing, ongoing maintenance of the facility. The next steps that we're proposing is that they will come back for the adoption of the ordinance, tentatively around the June timeframe, to allow for a closing before the end of the year. And that the, as a result, the IRB monitoring and collection of the pilot or the payment in lieu of taxes then resumes in July of 2026. And with that, I have Nate Bell with Plus Power, who's the senior project developer and here this evening, and together we can stand for any questions the commission might have.
Thank you, Ms. Tobias. Commissioner Baca, do you have anything that you want to add?
No questions, just a comment. I mean, this is a, I think this is a win, win, win from every perspective, from a public policy standpoint in terms of green energy, from a rate payer's perspective, from a stability, energy stability perspective. The extent to which they, there was a community outreach and engagement was, was absolutely appropriate. And so I think it's just a great project and I'm happy to support it and I'm happy that it's in District Two.
Thank you. Any other commissioners' questions? Would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Nope. All right. Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Tobias. Appreciate it. And that takes us on to speed enforcement budget increase for the operation maintenance section, presented by Deputy County Manager Elias Archuleta.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This evening, I'll be requesting approval of a budget increase and a new permanent position for the county's automated speed enforcement program. And also provide a brief summary of, of the program to date with that. The automated speed enforcement ordinance was approved in February 21st, 2023, and the program went live August 2024 with a 30-day warning period. Citation started being issued on September 25th, 2024, which puts just about seven months into the program. The citations that are issued are issued by certified law enforcement officers under contract to the county. And we have currently six installed on county roads, one installed on a state road with three more coming online in the next couple of months and a couple of more after that. And then we also have our mobile speed camera placed on Shelley Road on the road out to MDC. So the funding for the program, during its first year, the program is intended to be funded using general fund monies until such a point as the revenues received would take over and the program would become self-sustaining. So seven months into the program, our revenues combined with the general funds are sufficient to now sustain the program. And we are now looking to fund the permanent program coordinator position. That was originally, our intent was to have that position staffed through a temp agency for the first year or two till we can see kind of what that load and what the actually skill level and workload would be needed for the, for that position so we could level it properly and advertise it. And so with that, we now actually have a good idea of what that's going to take and that will actually be what we consider a program coordinator position, which is, is kind of a mid to upper level coordinator. The, so initially, we used 825,000 in general funds and to date, we've spent 569,000 of those funds. And we've received $985,939 in net revenues. The program costs consist of contractual services for the certified law enforcement officers, a hearing officer, and a program coordinator, as well as the state's share of the revenues. So per state law, 50% of the revenues we receive after we cover the costs of operating the program must be paid to the state. We retain the remaining 50% of those costs, which per our ordinance, we will use to fund traffic safety programs. In addition, we have a $15,000 budgeted for operating costs, which includes staffing the computers necessary for the officers, for other office equipment, and any supplies needed to support the program and the hearings. So with, with this item, we are going to request approval of the new program coordinator, which for salary and benefits, we have estimated at $110,074. And then that will end up rolling into as a recurring expense to the program, which again, will be funded by the revenue. So therefore, I am respectfully requesting approval of the budget increase associated with the program revenues and approval of the new program coordinator position. And with that, I stand for questions.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Frank Baca first.
I just have one question in regards to, and I think I may have heard this before at a previous presentation, but in terms of the, the, could you describe the traffic safety program that our 50% goes to?
So with the, the program, how we establish the placement, are you talking about placement of the cameras or the program in general?
Well, the traffic safety component of it.
Okay.
As far as the 50% of the revenue.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Baca. So the traffic safety is, that's, that includes our traffic calming programs. So when we get requests for speed humps or other traffic saving measures, which could be a speed feedback sign, which are those permanent ones that say your speed is such and such. But it also can go towards traffic signals or upgrades to intersection control. So whether it's like a two-way stop right now, if it needs to be a four-way stop, if it requires a signal. It could even be extended into some of the long-term of placement of traffic circles or roundabouts and also lighting. Lighting is a key component to, as we're seeing with traffic safety, where traditionally, traffic safety lighting was concentrated at the intersection. However, as we, as our neighborhoods are getting more multimodal, the lighting along the entire corridor or along an entire street becomes important because that way you would see somebody on a bicycle, as you can see pedestrians and such.
If I may just follow up on that, and I appreciate that. And what I'm thinking of is I attend a lot of community meetings, neighborhood association meetings, et cetera. And I don't think, I can't recall a single meeting that I've attended in the last six months, maybe even longer, that speeding has not come up as an issue. No matter where I've gone to in this community and elsewhere outside of the district, speeding is such an issue. So I guess the next question, follow-up is to, so everything you said, I'm glad to hear. And then the follow-up is, is there a specific plan or strategy to get that funding out to, you know, to in fact affect traffic and speed in a positive way?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, at this point, we're relying on existing requests for lighting locations and our speed hump, like speed hump programs. So we're going to try to hit the backlog on that one first. There's not a real long backlog on speed humps at this point, but we do have a significant number of streetlight locations that we'd like to hit. But that, that list is actually maintained and populated by comments received by your offices where they have concerns with that. Right now, our speed hump program starts with a request from the public. There's a form they fill out. From there, we go and we do a speed study. And based on that speed study, if 85% of the vehicles are traveling above the speed limit, it, it would qualify. And for speed humps, we traditionally are looking at five miles an hour or more, especially in a residential zone. Five miles an hour in a residential zone is a, is a pretty big disparity in the speed. And once those qualify, then the second caveat that has to be met is we, we get with the requesting either person or neighborhood association, and they are required to get signatures of 50% of the impacted residents that agree with the placement of that. Because one of the things we do see is when we do get some complaints, that may be a small portion of that neighborhood that, that is stating that they represent the entire, the entire stretch. And the, the signatures aren't those, are those that are affected by that. So it may not just be the one street they're on. It may be the streets that feed into that if it's a single street that goes into a neighborhood. So that's traditionally where the process can get hung up. And it may be that they are not able to get the 50%, you know, within a couple of months. It may take them a few months to get them in there. But if, if both of those are met, then we will place the speed humps.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Frank Baca, I've had the same experience with, with my constituents. Five years ago, when I was knocking on doors, that was one of the top three complaints was speeding as well as crime. And speeding is a crime. That's the thing. And the, the nice thing about this project, and Elias has really just done a superb job building this program up. But as county commissioner, we can't enforce the law. We can, we can create the laws, but then it's up to sheriff's department to enforce the laws, and they're spread so thin. And knowing where, you know, they've got, they've got a lot of issues to take care of too. And sometimes speeding isn't their top priority. This is a force multiplier for the sheriff's department. So if you have a deputy who can issue a speeding citation, it's better than this. But aside from that, this is about as close as we can get. The goal was to reduce speeding. Ms. Archuleta, last time, the data you presented was that the numbers were starting to go down. The goal of this was never to generate revenue for the county. It was to pay for itself so that we could make the county safer. Do you have any updates on the number of citations being issued? And is it working? Is it flat? Any updates?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Benson, we received our February update just this morning as I was kind of preparing my numbers together. And between January and February is the first time we saw a decrease in the number of citations that were paid. Unfortunately, Director Harameo is on vacation this week, and he's the one that has the raw data numbers. These numbers are the one, the ones I can present today are the ones that they have actually been paid. So to date, we have 17,540 citations that have been paid. And if we kind of back those numbers up, we're getting about 40% compliance with payment of these citations. So if we back that number up, we've issued close to 34,000. But between January and February, we saw about a thousand decrease. We were getting between 4,500 and 5,000 citations paid per month. And it climbed up. It started at about 3,800 and climbed up to 5,000. This, for February, it was down to about 34,000, or 3,400, I'm sorry. So this is the first time we've seen a decrease. And those are the first, the first six installations that we put in in the county, those have been set and they've been operating since roughly about September. Anecdotally, I passed two of these on my way home. And on Paradise Boulevard, I have seen a decrease as I've been going through there. Unfortunately, I was one to receive them early on and it really reminded me where I put it. But, but what I'm noticing on Paradise Boulevard, that's set in a 35 mile an hour zone. And pretty much as soon as you get west of Golf Course Road, that traffic slows and maintains about 35 miles an hour until it hits about Unser, which is a better impact than we normally see in these things because normally you see it solely isolated in that immediate location. But I think the benefit is, in this one, is where it's placed and it hits both directions. People are really concerned about how, how long that length of enforcement is. So we've seen some, like I said, that one's anecdotally. That's me going home every day. But we're, we're going to dig in and we're going to follow up on the one-year anniversary with actual like trend data that shows where we're at. The benefit of the program and the way we have it administered with our contractor is these installations are fairly quick to install and remove. So if we're seeing good compliance in one of the areas, we can move on to another area that's of concern.
Thank you, Mr. Archuleta. Actually, on Paseo, westbound by Louisiana, I received two speeding violations before I wised up and started slowing down. So it works for me anecdotally as well. And that's good. That's what we want to see is a decrease in speeding, which is creating safer environment on the streets. And I look forward to that, that further information also. And this was brought up before by the commission, but just to remind folks that the fine is monetary. However, you can also, you can also volunteer time as well. So if, if somebody's of modest means, well, first of all, slow down. Second of all, you can also volunteer time as well, which our community needs. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barboia, you had your hand up and then you might have put it down. I don't know if you wanted to, to say something.
No, I think what I was going to address has been said. Thank you.
Okay.
I had a couple of comments here. One of the things that I learned about this, actually, I learned in the process of, of following a bill that was proposed in the, in the state senate that proposed to eliminate the ability of counties and municipalities to refer the non-payers to collections. And, you know, it was kind of a disappointing bill to, to see that, you know, that really it was trying to limit the ability of this program to, to be effective and to seek compliance with the citations issued. But I did want to, A, flag that, that, you know, that's something we need to continue to monitor. Luckily, the bill was, was stopped in the Senate Judiciary Committee, but something that we need to continue to monitor throughout the years as, as the state takes a look at this. And they are the reason that, that we pay half of the fee into the state. That was, that was a state law and they were contemplating further meddling in, in the local affairs with, with that. So just flagging that for everybody to keep an eye on. And in that debate, it was also brought up that the cost of a ticket, if you're pulled over by a sheriff's deputy on Paradise, is probably going to be around 25 bucks. And the cost of our camera is 100. And I'm not actually making the case that, that we should lower our rate. I'm actually kind of making the case that we should really look to the legislature and ask if and ask if twenty-five dollars is, is a reasonable fine for, I can't even imagine that that compensates for the officer time to, to pull somebody over. Um, it, I guess it used to be a lot more expensive and then we eliminated court fees. And so now the actual base fee is only twenty-five dollars, which is really a literal slap on the wrist compared to our fee, which I think is actually a real deterrent. So the, the first question I had is on, I haven't really heard, what is the amount that is being generated for the safety fund or the safety projects? So of the nine hundred thousand that we're budgeting, is any of that related to that or there's a whole separate amount?
Uh, Mr. Chair, actually, the nine hundred and eighty-five thousand is what we're receiving in from that. Uh, that's the money that's coming into our, uh, our fund for, uh, for the traffic safety. Uh, of, of that hundred dollars, the first twenty-five is paid to the vendor. Um, and that actually is a, a benefit to us because we, we are not charged for any equipment, any installation, any movement of the cameras if we need to. And we're, we're allowed to add as, as we see fit to that program. So it's a, it's a, it's a flat twenty-five percent per, uh, per ticket that goes to them. And then a- after, after that is where we, we divide up. So, so far to date, that nine hu- nine hundred and eighty-five is what we've received into our program as net revenue. So that's what's currently sitting, uh, available for us to put towards traffic safety.
But based on the, the presentation that you showed, it seemed like most of that was going back into the program. Or I, I'm just kind of not understanding.
Um, um.
I don't know if you could put the slide back up for the pie chart? Yeah, I think this is the slide that I have questions on. So you have contractual services, that's what we're paying the vendor?
Uh, that's what was, we're paying the vendor and paying the state is both in there. So it's the vendor, the state, and the officers. So that's part of what that set aside is when we say we're paying for that one. That's not included in the, in the revenue split for what, like? So we pay those bills, so that eight hundred and sixty is paid first. And then the, the net revenue comes after that, so.
So is the nine hundred number in addition to this or it includes this?
It's in addition to this right now. These, right now, what you're seeing was our budgeted numbers at the beginning of the year. So we don't have the, like, the actual accounting of what that is. Uh, we, we will bring, we can bring that back to you to show, here's the actual light items. What these two, the two charts I showed you were what we were using for, for budgeting and, and, uh, budgeting for the program for the year.
Okay, so, so in other words, there is additional money in addition to, because the way I'm reading this is I was like, well, there's nothing going to lights and, uh, intersections and because we're paying somebody and then we're paying the contractors and there's nothing left. But there's additional funding.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's, that clears that up for me. And then I just had a, a question also about the, creating a position. Um, I'm a little mixed about that because I realize you have to have somebody to administer it. But if, if the true goal here, or the, you know, the optimist in me says that we wanna, we want to eliminate this program, um, because it's so effective. You, you mentioned, you know, having a, a contractor or a temp service agency. I, I guess just if you could provide a little more insight on why you're going this route?
So one of the reasons is that, oh, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, one of the reasons that we're requesting a permanent position is we've already had turnover in that position. Uh, and creating, and, and right now, we're really only looking at creating one position for this. Everything else, the officers, uh, because they're retired officers, we want to keep them as contract because then they can continue to, they don't have to suspend their pension. Um, and then the hearing officer is as needed. We've, we've seen kind of a, an oscillating need for that one, so we don't see staffing one of those. But the, but the coordinator for this one, we do want some consistency so we're not having to continually train that person in what it is. And it, it was actually good, the temp that we had, she was really great. She got recruited internally. She's now a permanent employee of the county, unfortunately, not in Public Works. But, uh, but this is the reason that, that we can contain that one. And, and with a single position, if, if this is successful in, in, in a few years, we're, we're gonna have a very well-trained, good employee that we can incorporate into the county in some other way, shape, or form. So we think this is kind of a win-win in that one. And it's a relatively minor cost considering what we're seeing come into the county.
And, and can you give any examples of what the, what the indivi- what the position does? Uh, because the, 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 the law enforcement officers are the ones that are sort of reviewing each complaint and they're, they're dealing with the sort of legality of it.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, one of the biggest things that they're doing right now is responding to concerns, uh, complaints or questions that come in from those people who have been issued citations. The other thing that they're doing is they're doing, you know, the day-to-day monitoring of whether the system's up and running, coordination with the vendor. If there is issues, if something goes down, they call them out, they get them in there. Um, the other thing is, uh, bringing in the revenues, doing the budget transactions to get these in, make sure the payments are coming, anything that's received here in, you know, there's the coordination of receiving payments that are come here and then coordination with any of the online payments. But the vast majority of the work that's being done right now is communicating with, uh, people calling and coming in. We average probably about twenty-five calls a day on that just alone. So at, right now, actually, when we did have the coordinator, Director Harameo and the coordi- and the, uh, contract coordinator, we're dealing with both of those. And, uh, while this has been vacant, Director Harameo and, uh, one of his staff has been dealing with that on their own, so.
Okay, yeah, that's definitely a, a concern to, to have the director taking calls. Not, not that he can't or shouldn't, but, um, we, there's a lot for him to, to deal with as well, so that makes sense. Um, and then the last thing, I, I kind of gave you a heads up that I was gonna ask about this or, or just share with you. Um, I've had a couple of conversations with the sheriff, um, over the last number of months about this program. And I know that, that you have, you know, presented to us multiple times and talked about how you cite these cameras and the data that goes into it, the, the crash data and things like that, that, that you're using to determine sort of what is the best placement for these. And the concern that the sheriff actually flagged to me, um, that, at the time, I was, I was asking him, can you help get some of these in the East Mountains? You know, are there, are there roads, arteries that you think are important? And he said, you know, can you send me the list? I'd like to see where they are. And he flagged the concern to me that the vast majority of these cameras were located in one geographic area that is predominantly, uh, a mi- a low-income minority community. And that, he said, from a law enforcement perspective, that would be extremely problematic if he was focusing all of his law enforcement efforts, uh, in, in one area. It would, it would actually be a constitutional issue, uh, with overpolicing and, and basically targeting, profiling. Um, I think this is a little different because it's an administrative thing. But, uh, I share that with you because, because I, when he said that and flagged that, I, I, I see the concern just based on where these are. There's, there's none in the East Mountains. Um, there's none in, I, I think there's one in sort of the Sandia Heights, um, Heights area. And one or two in the actual North Valley area. But the vast majority of them are, are in the South Valley. And I, I just wanted to flag that as a concern and, and going forward. I mean, I realize, you know, you, you, you want to be data-driven, you, the data doesn't lie. But at the same time, I, I just want to be cautious that, that you're aware of that and that you're consulting with the sheriff and, and his people on where those are placed and making sure that we're not oversaturating in one area.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, that, uh, that note is taken. Um, we'll do this, um, just for, uh, just to put this out there. Uh, of the six, uh, initial installations that we have on, on county roads, um, we do have, four of those are in the south or the far south or mi- near South Valley. Um, again, these are all, these locations were driven by the high fatality injury, uh, network that's established by the council of governments, uh, through there that show areas where the crashes or severity of the, the either fatality crashes or high severity, uh, instant occurrences are above normal. And because there's a lot of those locations within the county, we went for areas where they were one point five, uh, a, a factor of one point five over the, the average where we placed it. Um, and as we move on and we're starting to, to hit the list of the ones on the state roads, um, that will place about seven of the eleven in that, like, uh, South Valley, south of I-40, uh, west, uh, west of the river for the most part. But that does include two locations on Coors Boulevard, which, you know, currently and when we were doing this, was the highest, uh, the, the most dangerous road in the nation for pedestrian fatalities. So these are those things we're trying to hit. Now, is, now, like I mentioned earlier, if we're starting to see success, we can move these around. And we're, we've already looked at a couple of locations where outside of the high fatality, if we're getting, uh, complaints of speeding, we can do this based on the previous speed study we have. Because now this is another countermeasure we can use in addition to speed humps, where we can either put a permanent installation or the benefit of our mobile, uh, our mobile camera installation is we can hit those areas and we can move that around so there's not that expectation of where it is. So we can kind of, uh, address a corridor in that one. And, and that's one of the areas we're looking in. We were one of the first entities, I think we were the first entity with this vendor to ask for a mobile, uh, device, so they created one for us. So depending on the success of that, which right now, we think that's being beneficial, we may ask for a few more of those. And I think that's where we will really see the deterrent that we're looking for. Because in the permanent placement, if we're commuters, we know where they're at. We know where to slow down. But if we can hop around and hit some of those areas like you're concerned, like you brought up, where they may not necessarily be on the fatality network, but we are seeing speeding, you know, uh, chronic, chronic speeding in the areas, we can, we can, uh, task them there. And then we will, we'll work with, uh, Sheriff's Office Traffic Unit. Um, one of their officers was on our selection panel and when we were awarding this contract. And we do have a good relates, relationship with them, especially in our operations and maintenance side, so.
Great, I really appreciate that. And, and one last question after you said that. Is there an initial cost to installing one of these units? Like, is, is there a startup cost or is it, they just?
It's, it's included in that twenty-five dollar per citation fee, Mr. Chair. Uh, so for us, out of pocket, there isn't. So that's, that's why we said that's the benefit of why we structured this because we figured it would be an evolving program. And the other thing that we are not charged for is vandalism or destruction or, or, uh, equipment failures. So that's, that was one of the main reasons we structured this, this contract that way because they, they're not very popular amongst the general population. And both City of Albuquerque and Seattle, Rancho have seen vandalism towards theirs. And I think one of ours initially, even before it went online, got the power cut to it, so.
We put a, a speed trailer, the sheriff put a speed trailer out in these mountains and they shot at it and did a lot of damage to it, so I know they can, that, that's possible. So that's a good contract, well, well done. Uh, anything else from the commission? Do we have a motion? We have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. See no further discussion. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboya?
Yes.
Chair will leave us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Pass this five zero?
Thank you, Chair.
All right, last item this evening, we're moving, moving quickly here before it's even six o'clock. Uh, so this is, uh, is my item, rules of procedure, uh, revisions for regular administrative, special, and emergency meetings. Um, so I, I want to just talk everyone through the, the background on this real quickly so that everybody kind of knows where this came from. Um, having been on the, the board now for, for two years, um, you know, I just kind of noticed some of the, the, the things that we do functionally as, as a commission and how things come to the commission, um, how quickly they, they move through, um, different concerns like that, that, that I've noticed. And I've also had them brought to me by, by community members. And so, um, one of the main concerns that I'll highlight that, that is addressed in here is the, the speed of our agenda publishing. So right now, we publish the agenda on Friday night and we vote on the items on that agenda right now on, on Tuesday. So two of those days are weekend days. Um, and as I learned at one point, actually, we didn't even have that rule necessarily written. Um, so we could publish on Saturday night, uh, to, to be compliant with the OMA. It's really the only thing that was written in, uh, but we had a general practice of, of, uh, Friday night at five. So what this does, one of the main changes here is it moves our deadline for publishing back to Thursday night at five. Um, although it's, it's, uh, spelled out in hours, so it's a hundred and twenty hours. Um, that just gives the same amount of time. If we called a special meeting and it was on a Friday, you would still need the, the hundred and twenty hour publishing. So it gives all of us a little bit of extra time to review the material, talk with our advisors and constituents. Uh, but more importantly, it gives our constituents an extra day, um, an extra weekday, actually, more valuably, to, um, consider these things and talk to us. And I'm sure, I'm not alone up here in getting emails on like Thursday after a commission meeting, asking me to vote for or against something that we already decided on. And so I think that's indicative of sort of the, the speed at which we can operate. I'm not saying we always do, uh, but the speed at which we can operate versus the ability of the community to respond to what we're putting out there. Um, so I think that's one major change. Uh, it's, it's just tinkering with that and moving that deadline back a little bit. Um, another fairly significant change here really has to do with, uh, the number of hearings that we see for a given item. And so this is another one of those concerns that has been brought to me and that I have seen is that we can, I'm talking about the old rules, we can introduce an item at five o'clock on Friday. As a commissioner or staff, anybody can drop an item at five o'clock on Friday. And if you get the, the vote for late introduction, you can vote on it and pass it into law on Tuesday. So nobody has seen what you've drafted except you. And you drop it on Friday night and you vote on it and pass it on Tuesday. Three, three days. Two of those are, are weekend days. I think that's generally not a, a great way to, to be transparent and to be, um, accountable to the public and to give commissioners an opportunity to make amendments, to ask questions, to have a robust debate and, uh, and get the pulse of the community. So what this does, the other major change is that it will require, in general, two hearings on most items, so on, uh, resolutions. So, meaning we would, similar to, you know, many, I think all of us have served on the Water Authority Board. Uh, similar to how the Water Authority operates, they have a, an introduction calendar, right? You introduce an item and then you have a final approval, um, at the next meeting. So this doesn't require thirty days, it just requires two hearings. So, and it could be introduced in a special meeting and voted at, uh, in a regular meeting. Uh, but there's an important, uh, distinction that at any time, we can vote to suspend the rules, uh, as is common practice, for example, at the city or at the Water Authority with a, uh, four-vote majority or it's just called a, an extraordinary majority, to take immediate action. So if there is something that is really important and you get four of us to agree that this is really important, we need to do this now, we can still do that. Or we have the other option of, of having two hearings. So I think that's really the, the significant changes here. Some of the others are just, um, you know, language that was no longer applicable, things like having the Albuquerque Police listed in here, but, you know, that was when we were at the old building. Uh, so this just kind of recognizes a few changes like that. Uh, so, you know, with that, um, I would, I would make a motion for approval and then we can, we can go to discussion. Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay. So, um, open the floor to discussion. And then I do have, uh, a couple of amendments that, that I want to, the group to consider. Commissioner Benson?
Mr. Chair, thank you. One point of clarification, uh, under section twelve, with the, uh, appointments of advisory boards and committees, that's been crossed out. Is that to, uh, just to denote that it is, will be in consent agenda unless voted on to be taken out of consent?
So I'm gonna lean on, uh, CEO Baca because we had this discussion about how this would work and now I can't remember exactly how that works, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Commissioner Benson, uh, to answer your question. So the intent is majority of the time, our board appointments do end up on consent unless there is multiple nominees for one position in the event that takes place. In the event that takes place, then the item would be heard under approvals. So it just takes the header away, um, and defaults to consent. Now, however, there is an additional line in here for consent agenda withdrawals. So the intent there is if it's removed from consent for whatever reason, it would immediately follow for action. But again, unless there's conflicting nominees for one position.
Okay. Thank you, CEO Baca. And that, that was my assumption, uh, kind of reading where the different, uh, headings popped up. Uh, Commissioner, I do have another question and this may go to CEO Baca as well. Under, um, the parliamentary inquiry, section twenty-three, historically, we have, uh, turned to, um, Ms. Baca for clarification on, uh, uh, parliamentary issues. And/or, um, County Attorney Martinez, um, both combined. Why is this being changed to becoming the opinion of the, the chair? And then, and then also why is it not subject to appeal?
So Commissioner Benson, this, this language was actually the, the language that was in the, um, existing rules. It was just attached to personal privilege. Uh, you can, if you're looking at the red line, I don't know if you are, but it was actually titled, section twenty-two, personal privilege and parliamentary inquiry. But I, I digress. I actually, one of my amendments will resolve your question entirely because it will strike that section. Um, because those concerns are addressed, uh, by rule thirty-one, which is appeal, uh, and rule thirty-five, which is measures that are not covered by the rules. You default to Robert's rules. So, so basically that provision isn't needed.
Perfect. That, that relieves my concern. Or it, it would, it would create a conflict in rules if, if we left it in there. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Right. So we'll, we will do that amendment, uh, in, in a moment if there's other questions or. Commissioner Frank Baca?
Thank you. More, more of a comment, I think, uh, Chair, whoever else that worked on it, I think it's a great job.
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Baca, if you could turn on the mic, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Remind me, uh, I think, you know, it did a good job of, of making revisions and I think it's, you know, um, I think it's a good product. Um, I, just as a practical matter and, and I, I say this because having been on the other side of this days in, in a previous life as both a general counsel and executive director of agencies, uh, I know that it's kind of hectic around the time of putting the agenda together and getting the documents together. So I'm just kind of wondering in terms of from a staff perspective, how much pressure that adds or how much, if there's any way that, that can be relieved? Because I'm, and I'm not familiar with the, the deep specifics of when exactly the agenda is put together and then how much lag time staff has. But it's, I know it'd be a crunch time, I suspect, and I'm just kind of curious from a staff perspective, you know, what the thought is, let me, let me direct that to County Manager.
Madam County Manager?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Um, so first, uh, let me just say thank you very much for the question. And I, and I did want to just acknowledge and appreciate that the chair, uh, worked with, um, the staff to shape this. And so we had very, uh, robust discussions. So let me say that we have a number of our staff here and I, I cannot tell them how much I appreciate their work, how important their work is. And we have had discussions about how important it is that we are transparent with all of you as early in the process as possible. So one of the reasons that I feel confident about this is that if after a year we come back to you and say we're having a hard time with this part or that part, I, I would be happy to work with the chair to make a point in time that we can come back and report out to you, um, how we think this works. One of the most important pieces for us is that, um, and it is, it is more difficult. Um, but one of the most important pieces for us is that we want to make sure that we're serving you to the best of, of our capacity and, and making sure that we're giving you the information you need. If we see that we're missing deadlines or we're slowing things down, frankly, that are on your priority list, we may come back to you and say we want to make some exceptions. One thing that the chair, um, uh, built into this that I, that I really appreciate is that you've also created the opportunity, hopefully this is, isn't something you're going to change here, but the suspension of the rules. So if we do find ourselves in a challenging, um, situation, you all will have the option to do that. And there's also a piece of this that allows us to come to you at a later time with a sponsor from the commission that I think is ver, that, that I hope will mitigate any of those, uh, challenges that you've outlined. But I would suggest that we look at this a year from now, work with the staff to determine whether or not this, this framework is, um, supportive and suitable to your leadership and that we are able to meet the deadlines that are before us.
Thank you. Makes perfect sense. One more just question or comment. Again, this is, I think, good work. Um, is, and I think I've heard this before, it come up from, in a previous meeting, probably maybe before I was on the commission, but, um, there are times where there's a comment that is made before the meeting that's relevant to an item far down the agenda. And I'm just wondering just the mechanics of that, is there an opportunity to? And I've seen it done here in the last couple of year, a couple of months rather, that, um, that somebody reserved the ride or they made a statement that can I just defer to speaking at the time of the presentation? And I'm just wondering what the, if there's any thought about that in terms of sort of institutionalized that as an opportunity for somebody who, there may be certain issues that really makes sense for the comment to be made after a presentation or just right before the presentation. So that's just more of a question, uh, for the chair. Cause he did a great job on working on this, yeah.
Thank you. And, um, so I, I want to go back to your fir, your first part and then the second part. Um, I want to commend the, the county manager and CEO, CEO Baca specifically for working closely with me on this. Um, and, and we did have a series of, of meetings and robust discussions, the county attorney as well. Um, really looking at sort of how do things work, how could they work, how might they work? And, and just really appreciate all the assistance and the, the genuine, open discussion on this. And I think we, I think we arrived at a really good product that I think we can all live with and actually be pretty happy with. Um, so I appreciate you acknowledging them specifically for, for all the work they did on this. Um, to your, your second question about, I, I mean, and really what I see this as is, is the difference between the way we run our public comment and the way the City of Albuquerque runs theirs. So public comment at the city is on each item. Uh, so, so you have general public comment, they limit that, I think, to twenty or thirty people. And then you have public comment on each individual agenda item. And so this doesn't, the, the changes before us don't contemplate really any changes to, to the way we do comment. Um, I think those items that, that you're thinking of, uh, are probably like the ordinances that allow for that public hearing. So, so in those cases, if we do an ordinance, we have to have a public hearing at the time we hear the ordinance. So I think like that was where we've heard those comments, um, like on the low income property tax rebate specifically. That was one where I can think of. So the answer is, is no, this doesn't contemplate any changes. I, I'd, I'd be open to, to any ideas or discussion of those changes, but that's not it here. Um, and one other thing I, I wanted to just say, Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair, I, I see you. Um, that I wanted to point out is I, I realize it is a deviation from the way that we've operated previously, but, um, the Water Utility Authority and the City of Albuquerque both operate in a very similar manner to this with the, the two hearings. The notice is not as robust because we are actually expanding our timeline. Theirs is actually at the seventy-two hours because they have their publishing on Friday and their meeting is on Monday. So they do the bare minimum. I think we're just trying to do, do better than the minimum, right? To be more transparent, to be more open. Um, but I do think that, that, um, that the moving of that deadline is kind of a one time. It's almost like setting the clock back that we just went through, right? It's kind of a one-time disturbance, but I think once the cycle adjusts, submitting on Thursday is, is no different than submitting on a Friday. You're just bumping everything back by a day. So I, I really do believe in our, in our staff and our directors and everybody that we can totally adapt to this. And, and I, I don't think that this will be, um, the, the end of the world. And all of us have to adapt to it too because we also have to submit our items a day earlier if, if we are, so. Uh, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just, my, um, thanks for doing this work. I would agree with, um, and, and I think you say you have an amendment to make sure that the parliamentary, that we have a parliamentarian or maybe those parliamentary procedures. So I agree with that. Um, the other, how does this change our ability to, does it move up our dates as far as being able to submit, um, items that we want on the agenda? Does that change our dates?
Great question, Madam Vice Chair. So yes, it does. Um, so the, the seven-day rule still applies and because the meeting is, or sorry, it's a ten-day rule. Um, because the meeting is, because the deadline is bumped back one day, then yes, it, it bumps us back one day. And that would be for, for regular action, right? Where you don't need a vote to do a late add. Um, this would still allow the late additions that commissioners do sometimes. But again, that would be bumped back by one day. So it, it still applies to, to us, but instead of doing a late add on a Friday, you do a late add on a Thursday.
So, Mr. Chair?
I see you.
Yeah. If I could just clarify, so currently the rule is a seven-day rule, which is, um, two Fridays, Fridays before a scheduled administrative meeting. So this will bump us to a ten-day rule. So it would be, so for example, for the February twenty-fifth meeting, the ten-day rule is now tomorrow. Um, for that meeting, for submission.
For March.
For March. Sorry, for March. Yes. I'm a month behind.
And it would have been Friday?
Yeah. Correct.
Can you restate that?
So currently we have a seven-day rule, which is two Fridays before a scheduled administrative meeting. So it would have been this Friday. It is now moved to a ten-day rule to get into the queue for, um, for a final submission for the meeting. So that moves from Friday to Wednesday. So it's two Wednesdays now before a scheduled meeting instead of two Fridays.
So for something to be submitted for the twenty-fifth of March, we have to get it in mañana, tomorrow.
And Mr. Chair, um, we can have a conversation on this. When, um, for clarity, um, the March twenty-fifth meeting was used as an example. When we have amendments to rules, they are introduced at a meeting and approved. And however, they're not effective until two weeks after the adoption, which, so this is very different than normal. So, uh, so effectively these rules will be in effect for the first meeting in April. Okay. No panicking.
And, and again, Commissioner, Vice Chair, it will, uh, the late add option is still there. Um, same rules still apply to that. So, but, you know, again, that gets bumped back by a day because we're bumping back the, the whole system by one day.
Makes sense. Thank you for the answers.
Okay. So, uh, if, if we could do the amendments here, uh, at the, I'm going to start with amendment two and then we can have a discussion on amendment one, I guess. For, for our purposes, this is amendment one. So let me just jump to the section here. So, um, the amendment would be to strike section twenty-three in its entirety and renumber accordingly. Uh, yes, I, I make a motion.
A second.
CEO Baca, did I get that right or? You're looking at this?
Mr. Chair, so I think, and we can certainly proceed with the elimination of the entire section. However, I think the intent was to split rule, the original rule twenty-two, um, and, and create two because it was originally called personal privilege and parliamentary inquiry. And so we were splitting it so that the new twenty-three would be parliamentary inquiry. However, we would remove the language, a request for the chair's opinion, apologies, where am I at? A request for the chair's opinion, not a ruling on the matter of parliamentary procedure as it relates to the business at hand, this opinion is not subject to appeal. So that sentence would be removed only.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson?
If we can just strike the, the red link, the red letter language, then that still allows for a parliamentary inquiry, which then the chair would recognize. And then it goes to the, the other sections on how it's addressed.
So we'll keep the title. It's, thank you, Commissioner Benson, uh, for clarity. So we keep the title and the, the, the existing language, the chair shall recognize any commissioner making a parliamentary inquiry, period. The additional red line language would be removed.
Great. So I would revise my motion, uh, to strike the last sentence reading, "A request for the chair's opinion, not a ruling on a matter of parliamentary procedure as it relates to the business at hand, this opinion is not subject to appeal." We're striking, striking all that.
Second.
Right. Any discussion on the amendment? Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair will leave us.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So that passes, the amendment passed five to zero. And then the second amendment, um, I, I agreed to present this amendment, um, but I will just state from the outset that I do not support it. Uh, but that's kind of a strange position, but, um, I, it, just in, in honesty to, to all of the, the good help that I received in this. So the concern was raised basically of whether or not the two-hearing rule should apply to, uh, FRs, which are fiscal resolutions or financial resolutions. Uh, so currently the only exception to the rule of two hearings would be for nuisance abatement actions. Um, and I think the thinking on that really was that we already have sort of a, a ki, kind of a judicial process around that, that the department runs internally. There's a lot of notice given to those property owners. And, uh, and so I think that there's already a built-in, a lot of, um, communication with those property owners. And so by the time it gets to us, it's been through a lot of, uh, a lot of action and a lot of notice. And so, um, in the, in the spirit of allowing those to move through quickly and not, not belabor those, uh, we put in an exception to that. And so basically what I was presented with was, uh, what, so kind of an opening up for discussion. Is there interest in allowing a similar exemption for FRs? And, uh, and so, you know, the idea there being, if there was grant funding or, um, one that was presented to me that, that I think, so grant funding is one side where, where I think we probably all agree. Uh, however, I would add that we could do the rule suspension for that. The other thing that is also an FR that I'm not sure we want to do, um, just one hearing is, for example, the budget. The, the, you know, multi-million, hundreds of millions, billion-dollar budget. So, you know, my take on this was that if there is an FR that needs urgent action, we already have that built in because we can do a rule suspension. And we do that, for example, at the Water Authority Board regularly. When we have a grant opportunity from the state or from the federal government, it, it sails through usually, uh, not, not an issue if there's a, something that needs to move because it's time-sensitive on budget. But then some of the other items that I think of FRs, like, um, maybe budgeting for our DWI grants and things like that. I think we generally have a lot of notice. We know those come up every January or something like that. And so I think that we know those are coming and so it's easy enough to, to put those on a meeting earlier than, than what you need them. So I guess I'm just opening it up for discussion, um, if, if any of the, the manager wants to weigh in. Commissioner Barbara Baca first.
Uh, well, I just have a question. What is the proposed amendment? Is that what the county manager is going to read to us now what a proposed amendment is or?
So, yes.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out where it is within the, the rule change document. I, I have the red line up and it's been really helpful because.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to, um, pinpoint where this at, is that in the rules? So rule twenty-seven covers resolutions and this is where the exception is stated for nuisance abatement actions, but also details the two-hearing rule. So the proposal could be, um, uh, specifying that rule twenty-seven applies to administrative resolutions or adding that FRs, um, are also an exception. So that would be a potential motion to clarify.
So if we wanted to accept them, uh, if we went to section twenty-seven, after it says nuisance abatement, uh, nuisance abatement actions in the red line, uh, we could also add, um, is it financial resolution?
Financial resolutions, yes.
So we could add, and financial resolutions.
Shall require two hearings?
But to, to be clear, it would be an exception to not require two hearings on an FR. So as it's, as the resolution currently stands, all resolutions. So as the resolution currently stands, all resolutions, I'm sorry, as the rules currently stand, all resolutions would require two hearings, except for nuisance abatement actions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So earlier, when I said that I wanted to be able to take a look at this over the course of a year, one of the concerns I had was actually these kinds of resolutions. Now, the one that I'm most concerned about is financial resolutions where we're receiving grant funds, because there's timing that comes to us from whatever organization is making those funds available. And we, for the most part, want to be able to collect those funds, not have, I mean, have as little time as possible so that we're able to deposit those funds. That's going to be an issue relative to where the funds go, how available they are, you know, whether or not we have another couple of weeks of interest. So I understand the point that's raised by the Chair about, you know, budget, and I concur that I think there are certain items that just make sense for us to have more notice. But when we are receiving grants, when the only thing we're doing is receiving funds, I think that actually should be an exception. The other issue, I'm happy to wait the year and determine whether or not we see a problem. But for the receipt of revenue of any kind, I would ask that we make that exception.
So I'd like to respond to that real quick and say, the exception is built in, because all you have to do is ask for a rule suspension, which is done routinely at the City of Albuquerque and the Burnley County Water Utility, Albuquerque, Burnley County Water Utility, for exactly those cases you laid out, budgeting revenue that needs to be budgeted quickly, or for accepting a grant. And all that means is that you have to get four of us to agree that this is a pretty important item, and we should act on it right away. If for some reason it was a controversial grant, or budgeting for something that had a little controversy, I think we should have that extra time. If you can't get four of us to say, "This needs an extra hearing, we need to learn more about this." So I would just say that that bypass is already built in, and I would argue against building in so many exceptions that the rule is actually the exception, because you have all these things that are not, that it doesn't apply to. And I do think, you know, a huge part of our job as a legislative body is overseeing the budget, which includes all those grants and those, some are large, some are small transactions. And so I think that we need to make sure that we have the ability to look at those if need be. In many cases, I don't know that we need that. Commissioner Benson, and then Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I like about, and actually, I will make a second for your motion for the amendment.
I didn't make a motion.
I thought you did but didn't support it.
I'm presenting the motion, but I...
Okay.
A motion is not on table.
Does it need to be motioned and seconded so we can discuss?
If the will of the Commission is to consider adoption of an amendment, I think we were just having discussion on the idea of an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make a motion.
Okay.
What is it?
To amend, to amend Section 28, 27 resolutions, to add, along with nuisance base, exception of nuisance abatement actions, also FRs. So my biggest concern with this is just adding...
Okay, hold on. So is, first of all, you made a motion, is there a second?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Not hearing a second, so...
Mr. Chair.
We're on adoption of the bill. Commissioner Baca.
What I heard the County Manager say, Commissioner Benson, is that where it has to do with grants, or, you know, something, that kind of thing. I have a problem with it just being general FRs, because that is one thing that my constituents, when I, you know, two years ago, they're like, "Can you reduce your consent agenda? Because there are millions of dollars often in FRs that were on consent." And we've done that. We've really, so we talk him through when it's millions of dollars being appropriated, that kind of thing. So I think we've already been more, you know, responsive to those kinds of complaints. And if we just have the general, all FRs, we would go backward, I think. I think that it is deserving of a close look at, I'm using the consent as an example, but a closer look of possibly two meetings. But the exception that I'm hearing the County Manager talk about are grants, or, and receipts of funding that you want to move quickly on. And so that's why I wouldn't support the general motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms., Madam Commissioner. Mr. Chair, point of recognition, where are we in the rules of order in this discussion?
So we are on adoption of the rules change.
And yet, there has been no second. So is, there nothing to debate?
So the amendment that you made failed on a lack of a second, so we are on adoption of the underlying rules.
Okay, that's what I thought. I didn't know if I should respond.
Sorry.
But I can't. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the rules? Oh, sorry, I had you on the list, Commissioner.
No, no, no. So I think, I'm just, you know, I do think that your, that the suspension of rules option under, I guess it's Section 36, page 15, I think, generally will resolve it. But it does require an extraordinary majority vote. Is there any thought about perhaps making just a majority vote? I don't know if, is that a concern, or that, and I may want to put that over to County Managing and County Legal about that. You know, that might be a lay of the concerns, that being able to suspend the rules and act on something quickly, there wouldn't be one person that's just, you know, holding things up a little bit. But, I don't know, just a thought.
And Commissioner Baca, if I could respond quickly, I'm trying to find the section where we define the extraordinary majority. But that is not, extraordinary majority does not require five votes. It requires, okay, so it's defined, now I found it. It's page 10, it is under Section 18 motions, or, I'm sorry, no, Section 19, voting. Item F requires a two-vote majority of a three-member quorum. So in other words, if there's only three of us, you need two votes. A three-vote majority of a four-member quorum, or a four-vote majority of a five-member quorum. So you can suspend the rules with one person in dissent, in other words.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So first of all, I do want to just say to Commissioner Benson, thank you for thinking about how we bring in money, because that really is what my focus is on this. I will say to the Commission that, both as it relates to grants and bond proceeds, I think if what we're committed to doing is learning how this works over the next year, seeing how we're able to do business, if this slows down business in a way that the Commission deems is unhealthy for the finances of the organization, I would just ask you to consider reevaluating it. I will say that, you know, at least if we can make it a year, if we see problems sooner, I will alert the Commission, and we will ask for reconsideration.
And I would just point out, this can be amended, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I like that we're talking about a year. I know that once we pass something, it's a little bit harder to pull back from it, but I'm glad we're talking openly about, you know, sort of following and coming back in a year to test it. Because the other part that I often dislike about government is the idea that there's this, like, rule suspension thing that just sort of always happens. And it, to me, it's just one of those things that feels like, when you're the public watching, as I've been the public long, in previously, to watching in previous times, and like, why can they suspend that rule, but they can't suspend my rule? And why does this thing always happen? So, and I hear what you're also saying about, like, we don't want to exempt everything, and then what, why is this exempt? And that's not exempt. So government is hard. So I think we, if we can keep, I disagree with coming to keep checking in on it and trying to shape it up for the best of all in the long run. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And last thing I would point out, what I was saying before, is this can actually, I hate to undermine it, but this can be amended at any time by any Commissioner.
Yeah.
So we don't have to wait a year, we can wait till next month, or next meeting. But, you know, I do like the idea of checking back in on this, and even, you know, whether it's formally or informally, to the next Chair, or even while I'm still Chair, whoever. If there becomes an issue and we're seeing it, or management is seeing it, I am committed and open to hearing about that issue and trying to work towards resolving it, whether it requires additional changes to this, or something else. So I totally commit to that, and I think we can work together on it to make sure it's implemented well. Any further discussion?
One last comment.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
I mean, as you can see, we're kind of, you know, just getting into the weeds, and that's what rules are, you know? So I wanted to commend the staff and the County Manager for working with our Chair to go through, and this was an arduous process. I was in one of those meetings. Oh, my goodness, you guys did a lot of work on this. And so I do think that if we take the vote now and move forward, we can always come back and tweak it. And we're all in good faith operating under that assumption. So I call the question.
All right. The question has been called, so there's no further debate. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
No.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair will leave us.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes on a four-to-one vote. Thank you, Commissioners. The next Commission meeting is going to be on Tuesday, March 25th. We have a special zoning meeting at 3:00 PM right here in Commission Chambers. We also have a nuisance abatement appeal meeting at 4:00 PM on March 25th, and then our regular administrative meeting, also on March 25th at 5:00 PM. And I am just giving a little heads-up to Commissioners, that meeting agenda is looking a little arduous, so be prepared. Yeah, put in your meal orders now, and please be careful with what else you add to that agenda if you are considering that. So if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.